It's called to order the June twenty seventh, two thousand and twenty four Foxfire Village Council Monthly Work Session. Let the record show that all council members are present as well as members in the audience. So are there any changes to this agenda?
Take off the fire department updates down the bottom because we'll be talking about that earlier.
Okay. We'll just have a, I'll put a reminder, safety reminder under that one. So let's add safety reminder.
Where's that going?
Under Councilman Nelson.
Got it.
For July fourth. Or the weekend, whatever. It actually is no matter what.
Yeah.
Okay, period. Do I have a motion to accept the agenda?
I make a motion.
All in favor?
Oh, shoot. Hold on. My bad. Okay, do we have to start over?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, sorry.
Due to tape recorder not being on, we'll, I'll start over.
Okay.
So I'm calling to order the June twenty seventh, two thousand and twenty four Foxfire Village Council Work Session. Let the record show that all council members are present as well as members in the audience. And changes to the agenda, we have one as far as public safety, council member Nelson, safety reminders. Any other changes?
No.
Or additions?
Okay, I make a motion to accept.
Second?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. First up would be me, approval of audit contract with Anderson, Smith, and Will. We have a contract, Ken Anderson, who is, who is our auditor, will be working with our CPA, Jody Singh, our finance officer, Mary Gilroy, and myself as mayor to complete the audit for the two thousand and twenty three, two thousand and twenty four fiscal year, which comes to an end tomorrow. So we need to get this, we need to have a motion to accept this contract, the amount of the contract, and we did budget for this. And it's only gone up a small amount of money is not to exceed fourteen thousand dollars. It's technically thirteen thousand nine hundred.
That's, that's split between water department and admin.
Yes, yes, and it is split fifty fifty between the two departments. So.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion approved. Okay. Moving on, this is more of a, a public service announcement or a public awareness announcement. I wanted to make not only the council members but all the village residents aware, and I believe if it's not posted on our website, this will be posted on our website regarding the changes that the DOT is suggesting or recommending about the traffic circle in Pinehurst. And I know it's not our traffic circle, but it's still a county issue that a lot of, most of the people that I know, as well as the government of Pinehurst, the council in Pinehurst, are against this radical change to the, to the traffic circle. And they are looking for support in this issue as far as signing petitions or getting involved in going to meetings and voicing concerns if you have any, whether you're in favor of redoing the circle or whether you're against it. I think it's very important for people to get involved in something when it concerns a county issue. It's not, it's really no different than the ETJ issues we've had or even state legislative issues that we've pushed back against. This is just another thing that if you're in favor of it, maybe you can voice your opinions, and if you're against it, you, you really should get involved. And there's been articles in, in the pilot and there are numerous people working in the Pinehurst general area trying to get better solutions than this six lane in every direction plowing through of this, of the circle. And if they're going to be taking some of the homes on Midland Road, there's at least two, if not three homes.
Oh, really?
Yes, and, and they're very nice homes and one is brand new. So it's a pretty devastating, and they're, they're taking a sledgehammer, I think, instead of a scalpel to whatever traffic issues they perceive to be going on.
Well, this whole thing is very confusing. I mean, are these stoplights or what's going on?
Yeah, it's got stoplights.
There's stoplights, yeah.
And that's what it says.
That's just like a small snapshot of it.
DOT would improve traffic, traffic flow even minorly. I mean, you're going to do all that for a minor improvement?
Right.
That's nuts.
Right. I, I looked at it and went, yeah, try to figure that one out.
So anyway, I think we are going to, you know, people can go to the SNP O meetings, voice their opinions and pub, public comment, again, opposed or, or in favor of. But I think this is an issue that people need to be aware of, and that's why we are talking about it. So that's that.
You look at something if we're going to be talking.
Next up is the fee schedule for Foxfire Village. And we usually go over this and we usually make some minor changes to the fee schedules. And I know we did change some fees last year. I don't, the only feedback that I've gotten so far is perhaps changing the fee schedule for the.
Park.
And then I know we've talked about water, water rates for high usage. We've talked about that as well. So anyone have any comments on the village fees?
Where's the, uh, village grain? The comment is it's too much, it's not enough on the village park.
Yes, that's what I'm, I want to address.
Which one, too much or not enough?
It's not enough.
I might agree with that.
So right now, so everybody else is okay with the rest of the fees?
We have, we just started, so we're just.
So do you want to look down the list first or?
Well, we can.
How do you want to tackle this?
We, we can. Again, I have not gotten feedback on any of these other fees except for the park and water. So you can go, the annexation fee is six hundred, rezoning is six hundred, variance to the Board of Adjustment is six hundred, appeals to interpretation of the Board of Adjustment is six hundred. Extraterritorial jurisdiction expansion at the request of the party, of the request for inclusion of property is six hundred dollars. And that is, all of those are plus consultant or legal fees too. Site plan approvals are four hundred dollars, whether it's a commercial multifamily or major project, or major project. Building permits, we have lot clearing of fifty, single family residence is four hundred, family multi, multifamily is five hundred. Manufactured homes are two hundred. Modular homes are four hundred.
Why are they not the same? Oh, never mind, never mind, they are, never mind.
Commercial building is five, restaurants, right now, well, not that we have any, they have twenty cents per square foot. I'm not really sure why, why that is like that.
Janice, can I ask a question?
Yeah.
These fees are based on our administrative costs, not the leases time, any paperwork that, copies and stuff like that.
And inspection too, if we're going out to inspect the, the area. As far as the restaurants and hotels, I'm not really sure why it's twenty cents per square foot and forty cents per square foot.
Why don't we just do that as a commercial building?
Um, I believe you would have to have more inspections if it was a commercial building. But still, if you look at it, let's say a ten thousand square foot building, you're looking at two hundred dollars for a commercial.
Not very much.
That isn't very much. If anything, I would say we would put it, you're right, Mary, that maybe we should change it to five hundred for both of those.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We'd be done with it.
Right.
Less fooling around.
Commercial and restaurant?
Yeah. Oh, no, restaurants and motels and hotels.
Five hundred?
Yes, for each.
Okay, quick question before I forget. Where are we going to put in here for stormwater drainage for contractors? Because we would be charging them if for any of their plans. So upfront, we would be saying, okay, we need your plan for stormwater drainage.
Yep.
From a certified engineer. That would have to be a cost that they would have to absorb.
Yep, that's not on us, that's.
So. I'm just thinking this through. So we would not have to charge them for that, that build it in?
It would only be.
For our inspection though.
It would only be.
It would be for our inspection, that's where I was going with that. So once it's been completed, we had talked about get hiring on a one-time basis for each one, an engineer to come in and inspect it. That we would pass on into the building permit.
Right, but we don't, we don't know what those costs are.
Can we add that later?
Yes.
Okay, okay, so we don't have to.
We can make, we can make a, a resolution or whatever to change those fees.
Oh, okay, so we don't have to do it.
I don't think we, I think there's no reason if, once we get that cost, because that's an interlocal agreement or we're going to hire an outside contractor, it's one or the other, and.
Oh, I thought we had to do, do that now.
I don't think we, well, we can't.
No, because these were, these were effective September first, two thousand and twenty three, so we can, it's not like you gotta have it done today.
Right, okay, right, okay. I just wanted to make sure we didn't miss that.
Rereview of plans is a hundred and fifty, plus legal or consulting fees. That's, that's in the event that someone changes their plans.
Correct, correct, okay.
A structural alteration permit is two hundred, barn one hundred with living quarters or without living quarters. A barn with living quarters is four hundred, accessory building is fifty, detached garage is a hundred, swimming pools a hundred, decks fifty, fence fifty, fuel tank, fuel propane tank permit is twenty five. And work being done without a permit is double the normal permit theta.
So that means if they don't get a permit for any of one of these, they have to.
Double up.
Find out about it, okay.
Double up.
All right.
Sign, a permanent sign is a hundred dollars. Planned unit, a planned unit development.
Amendment.
Amendment.
Okay.
Is five hundred plus a hundred for each additional acre and the cost of quality assurance team review. Solicitation permit.
Do we allow, wait a minute, do we allow commercial solicitation?
No.
I didn't think we did.
No.
I don't, I mean, a commercial solicitation permit, like you go knocking on doors to sell something, I mean, that's what that is, right?
Back and clean yourself.
Let me just, what'd you say?
Back and clean ourselves.
Yeah, we don't allow that.
Encyclopedia's.
That's right.
Yeah, hey, we all had it, okay?
Let me just look up, but I don't, I mean, I don't think that one even needs to be on there unless.
I think we have an ordinance that says no.
Well, let's find out. Let's see if there's.
Put a question mark there.
Yeah, let's put a question mark there and see if it's allowed in the ordinance, and maybe we need to take it out, but. And the water, the permit fees, nineteen twenty five for three quarter inch, two thousand sixty for one inch. Are those, those prices are okay? I know, I, I don't know how much our costs have gone up. Have you guys gone into that at all?
I haven't looked at that number, but that number's, you know, it's still a, a good number.
We raised it about two years ago when I was, went through a lot of the costs.
Why do we got that two thousand sixty? Why not just make it twenty one hundred?
It was, it was based on, it was, you can't, you can't make money off of installations, so you have to be conservative in your, in your estimates.
So that's probably the cost of the meter, the cost of the installation of the meter that we do, you know, so.
So we have to take in the consideration Jesse's time.
Sure.
Right, Jesse's time and the cost of the meter.
And, and materials, connections, and, you know, sometimes, you know, yes. Boring is seven hundred. Meter reading is ten dollars requested by, when it's requested by the owner. Jesse, Jesse.
I never, I didn't realize that existed.
I wonder how we administer that, you know?
That's.
Or have we?
Yeah, that's probably what it could be.
We probably need to question that. And if anything, it might go up.
We do it as a service to the customer.
Or.
If there was a question about high bill or a meter reading, that's just probably part of the service that you pay for when you pay your water bill.
We could, we could delete it.
I would suggest we do that.
The only thing I can think of is if someone, if it's, if it's a constant thing, you know?
Uh, I guess if you sold your house and you wanted to last read or something like that.
Well, that's, that's start of business. Right, that's the cost of doing business.
That's right.
Take it out.
So I don't know where that, that came from, but I would, I would remove that.
Okay. Okay, the water, the water charge per month is a minimum of twenty two dollars. Up to thirty four ga, up to thirty four hundred ninety nine gallons.
What I would suggest is that we do a, a rate study. I've done a cursory review with other water purveyors in the area charge and our rates are in line with others. But we should probably go, especially now today, we're in a little bit, just a different situation. Conservation is going to become a, very, water conservation is going to become a very big issue going forward. And one way to encourage people to serve water is to structure your rates such the more water you use, you're going to pay at a higher rate per gallon. So I would suggest that, I don't think we need a, a consultant to come in and do a, a rate study, which a lot of utilities do. I think just we, probably something we can handle in-house through a, a rate study.
Okay, so how long do you, so anything above what you think that in the seven thousand to eleven thou, or twelve thousand gallon range? Are those the ranges you're looking at? Or, or is it more?
Fifteen to twenty five, I think.
Yeah.
Or is it at the twelve thousand to fifteen?
Fifteen to twelve.
Yeah, I can't really say, I, I don't know what the previous, if we ever put this rate schedule together, what they were looking at. So I don't know how they, I don't know how they structured it, or was it, whether it was just arbitrary.
It wasn't arbitrary.
A lot of times what you do is you.
It wasn't?
You do, you group your customers.
They, the last time I was looked at, they looked at the highest water level users and I believe lowered their rates.
They did.
Yep.
Based on what?
Yep.
What was the reason you had lower than that?
I don't remember that, I just remember that.
They came down.
Yeah, that they came down.
Who was the mayor?
Steve Durham was the mayor.
Steve Durham, yeah, he, he dropped.
Well, that's a long, long time ago.
Well, I know, I'm just saying, that was the last time it was really looked at, and they dropped water rates in those really, really high categories.
And that's something that I think is totally, well, and now we probably have double, I don't know how long ago he was the mayor, but we've got over seven hundred customers now.
Yep.
Close to eight hundred, closer to eight hundred.
Okay, but do we need to be a little watchful though, and I'm not, certainly not opposed to looking at the water rates, but do we need to be a little watchful of people who have horses and barns and farms and stuff like that?
Horses don't, you're talking, horses, you fill up a twenty, a twenty gallon bucket every day and sometimes you don't fill it up completely. So I would say most horses probably consume anywhere between twenty, ten and twenty gallons a day, maybe.
Okay.
Maybe.
Tom Lean's property is RA in the, it's in the village and it's RA, but I don't think he farms. I think he's got horses if anything. We have two parcels of RA in the Incorporated Limits, and if those were farms, I don't think you would want to penalize them through water.
They don't use.
I don't think Tom Lean built a farm. I think he was a, it was a large lot, maybe he's got a horse.
Most people, again, with horses, they're not using a lot of water. I think most of the high usage, I would be surprised. I think it's irrigation. I can't imagine it's anything else but irrigation.
Using, my experience, irrigation. And so probably large lawns.
But she would still want to have the appearance of the village as being first class. If you can't use enough water, it's going to look like crap.
We don't have, we only have so much.
I understand that.
So, you know.
But now we got more courts, you can't use it anyways, so what, that, you just, if you start running short of water, you have to do it.
Well, unfortunately, that's what's going to happen when you have no rain. I mean.
We'll get rain.
If the council would, would like, I can go through and review these rates and look at other communities in our area. If they're in line with that, make a decision then to either leave rates as they are or we want to.
I, I think we have to look at communities in our area that have finite, like we do.
We need to get carriage conservation.
Because we have wells, we don't have, we're not getting water in from, you know, Greensburg or anything.
Right.
Yeah.
Big communities, probably like Cameron.
You need to find somebody who runs their own well system like we do. It's not so good, yeah.
Right.
Okay.
So, all right, so we need to look at these high usage water rates.
So is that something I need to take care of then?
So are we looking at the twelve thousand and up?
I would say twelve thousand and up, yes. And I would also think we, we should truly encourage residents and people to structure their gardens in a, in a zero scape as much as they can. You know, there's lots of flowers that don't need a lot of water, lots of plants. Once they're established, you know, your camellias and your, they don't need water, and they don't need water at all.
Now, you know, the other thing you see, and I don't think a lot of people realize this, I mean, yesterday, probably around ten o'clock, eleven o'clock, I drove by somebody's house and they had their sprinkler going at eleven o'clock, in, in the, in the morning. It's, it doesn't make any sense. You know, if you're going to do it, do it very early in the morning, and basically you should be doing it late in the afternoon. So.
Hopefully that wasn't just yesterday, the day before.
What? No, that was you, I saw it on your line. No.
No.
No, I just teased it.
No, I think, I think people just need to be mindful of water usage, that we, we don't have an unlimited supply. We don't have a reservoir that, that we're pulling off of. And I think a lot of people coming in, they may or may not even be aware of it, you know? They may not be used to the fact that we've got six wells that are running and, you know, it's not like there are a hundred gallons a minute either.
No, they're not, they're, they're small, small, small.
Right. So conservation is important.
It is.
And you can still have, you know, and had I known the amount of care that coastal, you know, Bermuda side takes, I would, I would think on our building permits, we should say, we recommend these types of, you know, plantings and grasses, like a.
Pine straw.
Or pine straw.
Really?
No.
Pine straw required, no maintenance.
Exactly, but now, other than killing the weeds that grow up in.
No, that's, that's not true.
But, no, but like there's behea that needs like.
No water?
Just about no water, yes.
I think that's a good idea.
I think we should.
Because I've seen, I've, you know, people have said, well, you know, I have this grass and it died no matter what I did. They don't realize that this is a whole different climate.
Exactly, yeah, and the builders, I don't know, but anyway, I think we should, I think we should encourage the zero scape and the, you know, planting your gardens with drought resistant species, and there's plenty of them, and they, they are great. Let's see. Special permit event is two fifty.
Yeah, I'm okay with that.
Residents, okay, single, single shelter rental for three hours is twenty five dollars.
You know, I, I don't have a problem with the charges for the shelters for the residents. I think we're okay there. I do have a problem with the fifty dollar refundable deposit. And the reason I have an issue with it is, first of all, one of the requirements for anyone who is using the park needs to take out their own garbage with them. And I've been up there after parties and I've had to collect the garbage because they left it there. And, and I'm telling you, it's not a pretty thing to have to do.
Ugh.
When they pay their fees, included in their fee?
No, it's, they give two checks, one for the shelter rentals and one for the deposit. If everything is okay after the party or event, they get their deposit back.
So rather than you go out and have to clean, why don't you hire a contractor and just hold it, take the deposit, pay the contractor the deposit?
Well, here's the problem, let's say the party's on Saturday and.
Trash pickup is on.
Yeah, trash pickups not until Thursday. When am I going to get a contractor in there to pull the garbage out? I mean, it's a good idea, but who's going to, you know?
One more, that's it, that's, seems like there'd be a special pickup, you contact.
Oh, you mean with Meridian?
Meridian?
Waste? No, I don't think.
No, they don't, they don't, I don't think they do that.
They won't do that. Not for trash cans, no.
Okay, just to.
No, but.
We don't get the security part, we don't get the security deposit back, do we?
No, in that situation, in that, and I had to pick up four cans of garbage and take it to the dump.
Well, if they don't clean it up, don't give the deposit back.
Well, we don't, we don't.
How about we increase the amount of the deposit?
To a hundred?
Yes.
And you get a problem.
Because if you, if you say to the person, hey, look, if you want this hundred dollars back, clean it up.
Well, it's, no, they are top on that, okay? They are, that is all explained to them when they give their deposit.
Okay, so are we saying we're not going to refund deposits, period?
No, no, you're not going to say that.
We're not, but if, if you have to go up and clean the park.
That is not refunded.
It's an automatic, you lost your hundred bucks.
Yes, it is. Yes, it is.
Yeah, I agree with that.
We already do that, that's what we do, so.
Make it a hundred bucks.
Yeah, but so do we want to make it a hundred for residents?
Yes.
Yes.
Straight across the board.
Two hundred, make it painful.
A hundred's, a hundred is painful.
I think a hundred is.
A hundred is painful.
I think the piece has to be, the cost, right, the piece has to be based on the cost of the service. So if you're going to hire somebody to clean, if you're going to clean him or pay somebody to clean it.
Well, unfortunately, if we don't pay somebody, it's.
So maybe, maybe, you know, if it's a fee and the fees are based on the actual cost of the service rendered, I don't, you know, you just can't arbitrary say you want to do two hundred, I mean, can you?
Yes, you can, yes.
I think for non-residents, it should be two hundred because they've got no skin in the game.
Well, that's what I have.
Two hundred dollars.
Yep.
Two hundred.
Yeah, I may, I put down two hundred dollars for non-residents.
They could also be more difficult to track down. The person who lives in the village is pretty easy to find. But non-residents, I have no problem doing two hundred. It gives them incentive to take, to clean up.
Yeah, and I have, and I'm okay with the shelter rental fees for the non-residents. But I did up the refundable deposit to two hundred on, on non-residents.
Okay. Bounce check is twenty five dollars.
Pardon?
And.
Where are you?
Just on the next charge, Miss Lanes. Bounce check fee is twenty five dollars and public record information request is ten cents a copy.
Is that enough?
I don't think so. I think we.
I don't think so either.
I think we pay more than that for our coffee.
Yeah, I think so too. I think like twenty five cents a copy.
Well, okay, now let me ask you a question, because what if we get it electronically? I still think we should be charging for that because of the fact that it, we have to take staff time to provide that information.
I don't think you can, I don't think you can, uh, we'd have to check with the statutes, all right?
Okay.
That's what we need to do. So we'll, we'll check statutes on this.
Okay.
Can I go back, are we at the end?
Yeah.
Can I go back to commercial solicitation for a minute? It is in here, and it is allowed. It tells you, it's an article, it's Article two, section four, four, four dash twenty two, twenty three, twenty four. It has a list of things that are exempt, like if you're a high school student going door to door, something like that, and then it has a list of things for which you must get a permit, so it is allowed.
What are some of the things you must get a permit for?
You must get a permit for. Let me see if I can find it.
Well, number one, we would never even know that this goes on unless someone complains.
Someone complains, yeah. Where's the list? What it has is, it has a list of exemptions in section four, twenty-four, and if it's not in that list, then it requires a solicitation permit.
Okay.
So it's done more by exception.
Okay.
Okay. So it stays?
It stays, yeah.
Okay. Okay, so if a solicitor comes to your door, ask them to see their permit.
I don't answer the door.
Unless they're exempt.
Okay, so we need some, to do some work on this. Um, fire department contract, that is next on the list.
Okay.
Mary, do you have, Mary Dunn, do you have information for us?
Well, yeah, I'm gonna say some, I'm gonna summarize the issue in two sentences, okay? The fire department thinks we're cheap, and we think the fire department's not transparent. I'm not impugning anybody's character, but, well, I'm, no, I'm, I'm serious, but that is kind of the issue, okay? And so, we need to make, now, we worked with them to come down to three oh five, which I realize some of you might think is still way too much. What I think is this, we don't really understand their funding, and we also don't really understand yet the impact of pulling the station out. We don't understand their stuff about, the county now funds differently, where in the past, up until F Y twenty-four, twenty-five, they had separate funding for operational, separate funding for apparatus, separate funding for reserve, and separate funding for building. That's all changed. Now they're operationally funding, and there is one big reserve account, and so when some, a capital thing, uh, needs to be purchased, be it a new truck, whatever they're gonna do, that request now goes from the fire commission to the county commissioners for approval, and it's pulled out of this one big reserve pot. I don't think the county thought about how that interferes people, how it affects people who have interlokal. I just don't, I don't think we're that far. When Dawn and I talked to them, we gave them eight point seven five percent based on our valuation, okay? And then Eric mentioned that there's one truck that stays right here, so I said, fine, we'll make that loan payment this year. Have to understand, we're thirty percent of the calls, and I have some, some stuff I can hand, give to you. We're thirty percent of the calls for the West End Fire Department, and that includes service calls. If you take service calls out, and service calls is like someone calls and says, you know, I fell, can you help? I mean, and I'm not saying that's not serious, but it's not a real, and I don't know whether those calls go through dispatch or not. Uh, that's something I gotta find, I don't, I don't know. But service calls, um, they don't get paid for. Like, well, why do you run them then? But, and I'm not trying to be snotty when I say that, but our calls really are about twenty-six, twenty-five, twenty-seven percent of all the calls out of the West End Fire Department, okay? And then service calls throw on top of that, that's how Eric gets to thirty percent.
What are the twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven percent calls?
What?
What are they?
Well, that I don't know. I, there's a, there's a sheet, and I'm happy to give this to you, um, it shows the split between the county and the municipality. So like, for this year, the county shows at seventy-five point two percent, West End shows, uh, uh, we show at twenty-four point eight percent, okay?
So, let's, let's just take that math right there, twenty-four, twenty-four, let's say twenty-five percent. All right, let's make it easy.
I'll make it easy for you, I already did it.
What is their, what is their budget? Did they?
Their operational budget this year.
That was approved by the county?
Yeah, is five hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars, plus their loan payments at one oh five, which brings them in at.
Hold the phone, baby, hold the phone.
One oh five?
Hang on a second, I'll do this to you.
One million?
It's, no, it's six, no, one hundred and five thousand, I think is what she said. One sixty, or six sixty-three.
Take one and pass it down. That'll show you exactly what it is. That's one. I got one for everybody, sorry.
Oh, this is two sheets?
Yeah, it's two sheets. If you look at West End, in the two fifteen expense account, which is operations distribution fund, they are funded at five hundred and fifty-eight thousand, six hundred and nine dollars. Plus, their capital distribution fund, which is basically their loan payments, giving a recommended total of six hundred and sixty-four thousand, fifty-four dollars, okay?
That's their budget that they submitted?
That, yeah, that budget, I'm about ninety-nine percent positive was approved too, because they've never seen it change once it's submitted. I asked Wayne Best about that. And I can verify that with Amy tomorrow.
Well, can I just say one thing?
Yep.
Is, is that the loan payments, I don't think we should get involved in at all, because we were not involved in the purchasing of these assets. We should not be involved in the payment of these assets, because we never approved, nor did we ask for any equipment to be purchased. So we should not be responsible for the decision they made, and if they have the new truck here, there's no reason for that. Give us the old truck, we've probably had three fires, maybe five fires, that they've had to respond to. There's no reason that we've got a brand-new truck here. So we should not be paying, I don't, I can't even imagine, and again, it's a council vote, but I can't imagine us paying part of their loans when we didn't, we never authorized the purchase.
And this is something that going forward, uh, we're gonna have to work out with the county, because if we're twenty, let's say we're twenty-five percent of their calls, and they go like three or four years from now to drop two hundred grand out of the, out of the reserve from the county, the interlocal, the, the municipality is gonna have to pay something, or we're gonna go to the commissioners and say, hey, by the way, we don't need that in our fire station, we don't wanna pay. That's the part that hasn't been worked out yet.
Oh, okay, but, and let me ask you a question.
Fire away.
All right. Either way, they, uh, a truck here, fire truck, correct? If there's a fire, and it's usually manned by one person here, correct?
Correct.
They have a fire, they cannot take that fire truck out with one person.
Yes, they can. Yes, they can. They can take it out and pull a hose.
They can. They can't turn a hose on.
Yes, they can.
Not with one person.
Yes, they can.
Who's gonna turn the water on and hold the hose?
You gotta shut off at the end of the home.
I didn't think, I didn't think they wanna.
Eric, Eric was very clear with us, that they can pull a truck with one guy and have a hose.
Well, twenty, let me say, twenty-five percent of six hundred and sixty-four thousand?
Yep.
Have you done that math?
I've done. Here's, here's what it is.
It's a hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars.
And actually, uh, if it's six sixty, well, if you take the loans out, yeah, I included the loans, because at some point.
I know, so we should be paying them a hundred and six, a hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars.
Well, if you take six hundred and sixty-four thousand and take it by twenty-five point seven percent, it's a hundred and eighty-six thousand, two oh three.
Okay, well, that's twenty, um.
Well, I did it, I mean, I just did it.
At twenty-six percent?
Twenty-five, I did it twenty-five points off.
Okay, well, so what'd you come up with there?
Uh, one eighty-six, two oh three. And here, okay, now here's the thing, if you do that same number, okay?
So why are we giving them three hundred thousand? That's my question.
If you do, if you use valuation, which Janice, you and I talked about, funding the same way the county funds, and you fund them at eight point seven five percent based on our valuation, that's two hundred and eighty-eight thousand, four hundred and seventy-nine bucks. Okay?
Right.
So here's, here's the pull. When I first started talking, when we first started talking to them, and oh, hey, we're twenty-five percent of your call volume, and this is the meeting when I was at the county, I said, so if we're twenty-five percent of their call volume, and you gave them six hundred and sixty-four thousand, then I would expect to pay twenty-five or twenty-six percent of that six sixty-four. They see it as valuation, and we're gonna have to duke it out somehow, and figure out how we're gonna do this, because this, this dance we go through every year is just not a professional way of doing business.
The professional way to do this is, we pay our fair share of the budget, and also, I don't think it's unreasonable, we could say twenty-six percent, twenty-seven percent, whatever. We own that building.
Yep, I agree.
We pay for half of it, it's a valuable piece of real estate and a valuable building for the village, they're using free.
Yep.
And it also gives them more fire district, if they close this, their fire district changes.
They don't think it changes very much, because we brought that up.
It's not gonna change anything, their district will not change.
Well, it will, because it, it could, because there are outlying areas.
It will change.
Well, okay, well, even at that.
It will change.
Even at that.
They did all the mi, they looked at all the mileage for where it would go to, they maybe would lose a little bit, but it's almost, it, it's just really insignificant.
But it's, it's still a benefit to them to have this here.
No, it's a benefit to us.
Well, they're willing.
No, it's a benefit to them.
Let me show you something. They're, they're, they're willing to pull it out.
Well, again, why do we need, again, why are we paying almost fifty percent of their budget? That doesn't, it just doesn't make any sense.
Right.
Well, because, because we, we started out at that. If you looked, if you looked at fiscal year twenty-one and twenty-two.
I'm not, I don't wanna look at twenty-one and twenty-two, because those are done. They're done and they're gone. It, those years.
Well, I'm just gonna show you, we probably should have paid less. If, if we, if you use call volume. If you use call volume, it changes everything, everything. If you use valuation, we owe money.
Well, we're not, we didn't use, that was the, that was not the agreement. The agreement was.
Exactly. When you and I have talked several times about using valuation going forward, so if we're gonna do that, then it's eight point seven five percent, you're two hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars and change. That's valuation. If you wanna do it by call percentage, that's a totally different animal, which is fine, but we're gonna have to work with them on whether that's at all acceptable, or do we have to figure out a different way to fund? There's about three of us that have, that have interlocales, right? Us, Vass, who else have? I can't remember, Cypress Point.
Cameron, is it Cameron?
No. Cypress Point does Vass, and maybe they do Cameron too.
They can't, they can't, it is, it is just.
Yeah, it's probably Cameron.
Inconceivable to say, to give them a percentage of tax dollars, because what I would do as a neutral, when you think about it, just like our tax rate, our valuation's changed, we lowered our tax rate because of the dollar amount in our budget. We have to look at this the same way. If their budget is six hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars, and we pay twenty-five, what, twenty, let's go to twenty-eight, even though we're not, so six sixty-four times twenty-eight percent, you're looking at a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. Even if we went to two hundred thousand dollars.
Well, then how did we get to two twenty-nine this year?
Last year, we did two twenty-nine.
Because of the, because, I don't know, because of the seven, the set, the rate of seven hundred, or, or seven, seven fifteen, I think.
That's the rate we came up, they wanted more than that last year. We settled at seven fifteen.
Well, we, we cannot, I am not gonna take our tax dollars money, I'm not, I don't know, I don't know about the council.
But you can't base it just on call volume. They do other things besides, you can't do what I'm saying, it's the calls, it's the answers, if they're here. The southern tangibles.
Like what? That's what they're here for.
They, well, they show up for community functions like that.
Yeah, I'm paying them a grand, a grand.
It's just not their truck that comes in, you know, there's mutual aid groups in the other communities. We just don't get this truck if there's a large enough fire, we get the other three vehicles up in the west end.
But it's still their budget, their budget.
Yeah, but we just can't base, say, okay, we get this percentage of calls, so we should pay this percentage of the budget, because there's this other criteria that, that.
I think I'd say you'd do it.
Well, we shouldn't be paying fifty percent of their budget.
Right.
But remember, if you do it on valuation, we're not paying, we're doing on, that's valuation is how you get to that number.
Well, then the valuation needs to be lowered, to be neutral, uh, to be budget neutral. We can't, it's just like if, if we, if we said, okay, our budget is one point three million, but I'm gonna tax my, my taxpayers, so I get one point five million, or one point, or two, or two million dollars, because that's the tax rate. You can't do that.
Well, we didn't increase any taxes to cover, to cover the fire department, but here's what I'm thinking.
Well, no, because they're taking, but they're taking it out of our tax dollar. So our rate went down, their rate is going up, so they're technically taking a larger percentage of our tax dollars.
Okay, so let me propose this. If we're, if the station we have here, ninety percent of those calls are run within corporate, within our corporate limits, then it would seem to me that if we can figure out what the real operating costs are for this station, we would pay ninety percent of those operating costs. Well, think about it, I mean, if that station.
And then a smaller percentage of the West End station.
I wouldn't pay, I would, I wouldn't pay anything for the West End station.
Why not? They come here, they get your holster.
Well, yeah, but here, but here's the thing, all the fire departments go all over the place. I mean, if you have a big fire, they need to practice, and there's, there is nothing wrong with that.
But they don't charge us for it. If, if pine straw comes, they don't charge us.
Okay, but if we are ninety percent of the calls that come out of this station, then I think it's reasonable for us to pay ninety percent of the operating cost of that station.
When you.
What's alternative, Dawn? If we don't go with, say, we tell the West End, listen, we don't want your fire rotation anymore.
That's not an option.
Okay, so it's not an option, right? So now, they've said, this is what we need to operate.
Yep.
This is your percentage, or it's not percentage, this is what we wanna get from you folks. You guys went in and negotiated it, and came up with another number, a little bit lower.
We spent two hours screaming at each other, but, yeah.
So they've already, kind of, through negotiation, have come our way a little bit. We've got more people in Foxfire now, we've got double the population, the cost of everything, you know, you watch on, on T V, and everything is twenty, thirty, forty percent more. Is it that unreasonable that the fire department, based on what they've spent before, and we paid them based on what they spent before? I mean, it just seems like the cost to us has, has gotta go up. I don't think the, I don't think the other residents in the West End fire district, they're not, you know, if we have to pay more, they're not getting the break, they're probably paying the, the same as what they paid out, I would think, you know.
Well, people in West End are, we're gonna pay the eight seven five.
The eight seven five, okay, and that's what, you said the eight seven five brings up, us up to that two hundred and eighty-six.
Two hundred and eighty-eight dollars.
Okay, you negotiate the figure of like three oh five or something, three hundred and five thousand?
Yeah, we threw in a little meeting.
Twenty thousand dollars.
So let me ask you, because you, you said it's not an option.
They do a lot of intangible things, I guess if you wanna see just the, the presence of the, the fire department.
So why is it not an option not to use this fire department? Tell me why.
Because as a municipality, we either have an interlocal agreement with a county fire department, or we stand up our own fire department, and I don't, I think that for us is a nonstarter.
That'd cost two million dollars.
Uh, that just is a nonstarter.
Okay, so this is considered an interlocal.
This is an interlocal agreement. Here, we're still.
So we're already getting a bargain then, is what you're saying, yeah.
Okay, but, okay, if, no, no, no. Why are we not locking them in for X amount of years on a rate then?
Because they wouldn't do it.
They wanted to, they wanted to do it a couple of years ago, so now they don't wanna do it?
They don't wanna do it with what we offered them. I'm looking.
Well, you can't lock in a number, because it's gonna be a reevaluation, another, another four years, so everything's gonna change, so you can't go out.
Well, I'm not saying go, you know, five years, but the, the point is, is if their budget is six hundred and sixty-four thousand.
Yeah.
I am not gonna pay fifty percent of that with Foxfire's money.
Okay, one of the other things, you have to remember something else, though. They are gonna get slush money from the county based on the sales tax valuations from the U S Open. I'm sorry, I didn't throw that in right up front. They've been told, they're, they're getting additional funding, probably a hundred and twenty-five to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for radios, because if they don't update their radios come January first, twenty twenty-five, their radios don't work. And there are some other things in there too, and I have not had a chance to talk to Wayne Best and find out what that kinda stuff is, nor do I know yet what the dollar amount is that they're gonna get. But it would seem to me that we are also responsible, if we're gonna use call volume, we're responsible for a portion of that, putting in our portion for that money.
But they're also getting grants too.
Yeah, okay, but here, look, we're gonna have, ever since we went to a county-wide fire tax, we have been beating our heads against the wall, and we gotta figure out how we're gonna do this, so every fiscal year, it's just not a keg of dynamite. That's no way, and here's the other thing too, we need to decide, do we think that the fire department, do we see them as a valuable part of our community, or do we, and that, we aren't probably all gonna agree on this, or do we see them as a. Or, do we, and that, we're probably all gonna agree on this, or do we see them as a service? And there's a big difference, there's a really big difference in how you look at it. I've been thi, my husband says, what are you thinking about, fire department, it's been going on with me for two months? Because there has to be a way to do it, and we're smart people, and I'm telling you, we can figure it out, but I don't think we have all the facts.
The, the big, the biggest thing is the cost, what their bottom line, it's just like with our budget, that's the thing,
Yeah.
is, their cost to responsibly run their department, and, and we should not, and they should not, think that they have a carte blanche to just take as much money as they want from Foxfire, because we don't have a choice.
I don't, Janice, I don't think that's how they look at it. I just don't think that's how they look at it.
I'm not so sure.
Well, they approached us, they wanted, uh, three hundred and
Thirty, twenty?
Three hundred and ninety, what, ninety-nine thousand more by this year. That's the way they approached us to start, they wanted additional ninety-nine thousand this year.
Yeah, based on, based on why?
Cost of the...
Well, that's what they wanted, and we sat down and they, but I said, Mary and I were up in the police, up at the fire station, and sat around, we, they said, we're tired of negotiating, we're sick and tired of this, we want this, we want this money, and we said, well, how can we get a dollar a little bit? That's it, we're not gonna negotiate, period.
And I'm not sure how much of a choice we have, it's, like when you go into a store, you know, you may think that the vendor only paid five dollars to get that thing up, you know, and, but I want it, he's charging me a hundred bucks, I'm thinking, well, it don't cost you, you know, I know, granted, this is public service, a little bit different, but you would still, you know, it's either you want the fire department, you want their presence there, you want the, you want the West End Fire Department? I think we have to, we have to pay the price less, and they were willing to negotiate it down a little bit. And so it comes down to, if, if you don't, if your number that you think would, would, they're worth to us, and they feel that they're worth more, you know, you're at an impasse.
So how much are they getting from the county?
We don't know.
But it doesn't make any...
Operationally, operationally, they're getting six hundred, and what, what's on that sheet, six hundred and sixty-four thousand, fifty-four.
But not apparatus.
No, that's, that's operations, plus a capital fund distribution of one oh five, four forty-five to pay their loans.
So what's their budget?
Their additional money, this is, they, here's what the county did, they only funded them operationally.
No, I understand this, so...
So they could add the cost that we're not aware of in their budget.
Everything.
No, what the county is saying is, where they used to reserve money, in a, in addition to operational, right? When they, when they taxed at twelve point one percent, which was the county fire tax, eight point seven five went to operations. The remainder was divided between capital, apparatus, and building fund, I think, okay? So the county's not doing it that way anymore. They said, why are we reserving money for a building if you're not building a building? That would be like us, why would we reserve money for a building if we're not building a building, okay? So they're doing it completely, there is a total change in how they're doing it. Here's...
Let me, let me go back, I still am confused. What was the budget they submitted?
The budget they submitted, actually, for West End, was seven hundred and twenty, ding 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 ding, seven hundred and fifty-nine thousand, nine thirty-nine. This is what was submitted, this was proposed, which is, which was an increase of two hundred and fifteen thousand, seven hundred and eighty dollars.
And why, what's the big increase?
It had to do with, they were setting aside for buildings, setting aside for apparatus, setting...
Who was setting aside?
That's how the fire department used to fund.
West End?
No, the whole fire department, there's a list of all, all the fire stations and what they requested, not just West End, that's everybody. This is what the fire commissioners presented to the county commissioners.
But they didn't get it?
They didn't get it.
They got the...
Yep, yep.
Okay. So their budget of five, seven, seven fifty-nine was not approved?
Correct, their budget of six sixty-four was approved.
For West End?
For West End, with additional money coming from the county, based on the overages for sales tax, and motor vehicle tax, and all that kinda stuff, and that's not been decided.
So their, so their budget, so they're fully funded without any money from us at all?
No, uh, no, because if you look at the, they, they maintain a call split, right? That's why you have county, and you have county percentage of calls, municipal, um, set of calls. I, I can't imagine they're fully funded at seven twenty-nine.
Can I see that sheet again?
Yeah, you sure can. I'll make copies of this for anybody, that was the presentation that they did. And if you flip it over on the back, when we get to ISO ratings, that was from one guy in White County.
You know, I, I, I have to agree with Janice regarding the fifty percent of their budget. It just, we're not fifty percent of their costs. We're twenty-five percent, we're twenty-six percent. Right, and even if we went to thirty percent?
Right.
Well, all the, all the calls the last five years averaged out to thirty point six percent, that's all, all the calls.
The calls that they made in Foxfire?
Yep.
Average out to what?
Thirty point six percent the last five years.
Same.
Last five years?
Yep.
Okay, and, and I think in the last five years, we've had one fire.
Well, they do more than that.
But that doesn't make a difference, this is here always, they'll have to...
No, you, you have, you, we do have to, we do have to, we do want fire protection. I'm, I'm not saying we don't want it, but just like any other municipal entity, you have a budget, especially when you're using tax dollars. You can't just say, oh, you know, you can have X percent of these tax dollars, without knowing where the money is being spent. And the fact that we're giving them money to supposedly cover our expenses, and, and support their function, but we don't know what they're spending it on. We have...
Well, then how did we end up?
So it's a blank check.
How did we end up agreeing to two hundred and twenty-nine thousand last year, then?
That was based on, we had numbers, they gave us numbers last year.
What kind of numbers?
They gave us numbers, we didn't, we didn't pay them what they wanted, we, we showed them about, uh, twenty-eight thousand dollars, that's what they wanted.
Well, they're gonna get an extra, they're gonna get an extra twenty-four thousand, most likely with the adjustment at the end of the year anyway, for motor vehicle tax. Because motor vehicle tax always gets, we always end up paying them more. Because, and don't forget, that rate is based on tax assessment, not taxes collected. So, if we don't, if people don't pay their taxes, we still have to pay that rate to the fire department. So anything, not that we have a lot of delinquent taxes, but we've gotta pay that based on our assessment, not on what we've collected.
Okay, I need to bring up something. We are about to be out of contract with them. Okay, our contract with them ends on the thirtieth of June.
Well, we, we signed it late last year as well, it wasn't signed until Aug, uh, July.
Well, okay.
I'm not gonna rush into, I, and this is a council vote, so this is just my opinion.
We're gonna unite?
We have to, well, we can, yes, we should.
Do you wanna see how the people stand right now? Okay, if, if we paid two thirty last year, costs have gone up, just for everything to say thirty percent, and I don't know what that comes to, but, and Don said, well, we, we took them from two fifty-seven down to two twenty-nine last year, so we, they kinda gave us a break last year on it. I mean, if, I don't know how much of a choice we have, it's, you know, they, they put a number out, and we don't like it. I guess if I'm, the, the, the West End Fire Department, gonna say, so you don't like it, why feel really bad for you, but, you know, that's what the numbers come out to be, you know?
But here's the thing...
I mean, what would you change it to, and if I'm there, and if I guess, if I was the West End Fire Department, I'd say to, watch our village council, if, if, uh, it's gonna stop, if, if you think you know the business that well, and that is to, you know, you give us your numbers, what you think, you show us the breakdown, which you think you wanna pay, and what would I be telling you? You know, that's not gonna work, you know?
But the thing is, is that...
I don't know how many choice we have as well, I guess that's the bottom line, what I'm saying, is I don't know if we have choices.
I think the choice we have is, did you see a line item budget from the West End Fire Department?
I have a line item budget, I got it after we had talked with them, okay? But here's the thing, we're station sixty-five, right, sixty-one, okay, here's the thing.
Actually, I have that on my desk.
It doesn't, uh, it's kinda like, you know, in our budget, where we break out for Medicare, Social Security, we break that out per department. Their budget doesn't break that stuff out for Foxfire, it's a whole bunch of gray lines, a whole bunch of gray lines. And that is the thing, that I'm determined, we're gonna get, we're gonna figure out how to do this, so I'm not going through this next year, there is no way. If we're ninety percent of the calls for the Foxfire station, then we need to be paying ninety percent of the cost. But it's determining what their actual costs are in Foxfire, that is the hard part.
Their actual, their actual cost would be personnel?
No, what I'm saying is, by the numbers, if, and I know you guys all can't see this, but when you get, whoa, don't do that. When you get down here, there's a whole bunch of gray lines, okay, and it's all assigned to West End. None of that is broken out for Foxfire, they don't do that, you know, like we did it, they don't do it that way. And so you have really no, you have no way of knowing what that is, and you get down a little further, and you also get into building allowance, adjusted capital building allow, all that, there's nothing there for Foxfire.
Well, there shouldn't be, because there is no building allowance.
Okay, but what, you understand what I'm saying, though, they have things in here where they don't split it out between Foxfire.
Well, they got salaries, they got salaries in here, but it's only for West End.
That's what I'm saying.
They don't break it down here.
And this also now needs to be put up against what the county is gonna do with reserves, and I don't know the answer to that. They don't know the answer to that. They don't, uh-uh, when I brought this up to Wayne Vest and said, hey, look, how are you gonna hand out here the locals for reserves? Eh, I said, what do you, they, I mean, they didn't, and I'm not criticizing them, this is a big change for how the county funds, and what they're trying to do is fund based on actual expenses, which makes sense. But I have no idea what they're gonna do for their reserves.
Well, and that's what we should be doing, we should be funding them based on actual
Cost, and then...
And then reserving.
Reserving, and I told them, I said, listen, we're gonna hold the reserves.
And the costs aren't, aren't whatever they want. Well, it can be, but that's, that's pretty shabby, if you ask me, uh, and, that's...
Okay, so what are we gonna do? I mean, I, I'm willing to do the work with the county, and with the fire department, and with Don, to get this thing figured out. But that, that, well, but that's not gonna happen, that's gonna take months, and it's gonna take a whole lot of banging heads till we get it right. Or, or not even get it right, we get something that everybody goes, okay, this is how we're gonna do it.
I'll be right back, right back.
And there, there, there is a way to do it, I mean, I'm not, I'm not...
Well, you know what's frustrating about them, is they keep holding back information from us.
Well, let me...
The thing is, if we don't give them basically what we're offering, they are going to shut down the fire...
I'd like to recess this meeting, recess the meeting for one minute.
Just need to not have any calls. Just need to not have any calls.